Alrighty, so City Clerk Kathy Swanson, would you do roll call please?
Mayor McGowan.
Here.
Matthew Lund.
President.
John Glando.
Here.
Ruston Weaver. I think Ruston muted, okay.
He's here.
Stephen Harper.
Hi Kathy.
President.
Mickey Holt.
Here.
Beth Williams.
Here.
And Kim Ratlin.
Here.
Okay, everybody's present and accounted for. So how about a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting agenda.
Second.
I'll second it up.
Okay, who is first Kathy? John Glando motioned, and the second was by?
Stephen.
Stephen, okay. You approved the meeting agenda. All those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the meeting is approved. I will have, I do have, the, I will appoint the fire chief and all those from the fire department, but I'll wait until Ed Mills is able to make his presentation, and then I'll appoint him and ask the council to approve him at that time. Now we'll go down to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move. Second.
I move by Stephen Harper and seconded by John Glando to approve the consent agenda. Questions on the motion? If not, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda is approved. So we're going down to officer reports, and the first one we'll hear from is our city administrator, Rob Olman. Make it away, Rob.
Yes, thank you. Hi, Honorable Mayor and City Council. So, City Hall, of course, has been busy. You can see that by the new business on the agenda tonight, so I'll let that speak for itself. I wanted to give you some final 2020 numbers for the building permits. For, we had, we sold 102 permits in 2020, which is up from 83 in 2019. However, the, the permit fees gathered was, in 2020, the total amounted a little over 100,000. Where in 2019, it was 146,000. So we're down on the permit fees themselves. Just smaller proj, a lot more smaller projects is what the, what happened there. And then as far as inspections, those are also down slightly. There, I did about 300 last year, or in 2020, and in 2019, it was 464. So, of course, we had several months, as you know, shut down for, for construction because of COVID. So that's, that's it for the building department. I'm still working with our IT consultant, and we've got the servers racked in their new racks. And they're kind of cloning themselves, I guess is what they call it. Our, our old server is still functioning and it almost ready to be shut off, and it needs to, it needs to retire, that's for sure, but that is still going good, but a lot more work than I had thought, but it, it is definitely needed. That's all I have for my report tonight, unless you had some questions.
Well, everything sounds quiet there, Rob. And now we'll go to Lucy Temple, our city planner.
Hello, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council.
Somebody's typing. I wish they'd mute themselves.
Rob can take care of that. Um, I wanted to let you know about two different permits that are available for comment. One is the vertical bridge. Hey, Rob, is there any way to? Thank you. So the vertical bridge applicants are those responsible for presenting the city with a cellular tower application. They have submitted their permit applications. I'm processing those, and I sent the notice of application out last week. It'll also be in this week's paper. And there is a webpage on our city website. You can look at cityofclayellum.com, and then at the top, you can look for the public notices tab. But also, I put a link right in the middle of the homepage to get you to the project page. And you're also trying something new, which, there's a link at the top that says, click here to comment. And so there's actually an online comment form on that webpage. I've already received my first comment, and I'm pretty excited to see how that pans out. And then the second one, oh, Ken, sorry, Councilman Ratlin.
Yeah, Lucy, I, I thought we had approved the vertical bridge.
Oh. At a previous meeting, you, you authorized the mayor to sign a lease agreement with vertical bridge, but they have several permits that need to be processed. So that's what we're.
Okay.
Yep, just two different, two different pathways. So, but I just wanted to let everybody know, you can comment until January 20th on that project. You can also email me or send something in the mail for comments. But I wanted to highlight that we're trying out an online comment form for that. And I also have a notice of application going out this week on Wednesday. It'll be in this week's paper for Gravity Coffee. They are renovating the old Burger King up by Safeway. And so that notification is going to go out, and also will have a dedicated webpage, and I'm hoping to do online comments for that as well. That comment period will go through the 27th. And I just wanted to point out, in case anybody noticed or is going to notice, that we're doing a little bit of firewising up at the police station property, the DNRs. It's their conservation corps, a group of young folks that are learning to do hand trimming and, and thinning activities. They're getting some job experience. And the DNR offers this and has offered this to us at no cost, in exchange for some land to work on for the last three years. So we're pretty excited that they're up there. And when they're done, I believe they're going to move on to property surrounding our airport and maybe some other places. So if you see that crew out there, that's what's happening. Thanks, everybody.
Okay, thank you, Lucy, for that. Next, we'll hear from our Public Works Director, Mike Engelhardt.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council members. With the holidays and a little bit of snow, the crew's been out, obviously, maintaining the hills on a regular basis, and then the little bit of plowing that we had to do. Along with that, now that the weather's warming back up and kind of drying out a little bit, gives us an opportunity to go around and repair any potholes that have shown up. Along with that, again, the guys have been out on a regular basis, especially on Fridays, out jetting some of our known troubled areas as far as the sewer lines go. Keeping those under control, which has been really nice, making that a regular routine for us, which has minimized the callouts that we've had, which is then saving on the overtime. Another thing that we did is right at the first of the year, we sat down as a group and had our annual welcome back and kind of go over what we did over the previous year and what our plans, goals, and objectives are for the coming year, as well as look at our safety program and what we can and, and should be doing to help improve on that. And, and I kind of, you know, make it, I'm a firm believer that they're going to take ownership if they have some say in it. One of the things they brought up was our VAC truck, which is the big sewer jetter truck that we use more than any other piece of equipment we have, has a lot of blind spots on it. So we, one of the things that they'd mentioned was, you know, when we don't have somebody around to help spot while we're backing that thing up, it would sure be nice to have some backup cameras on it. So we actually purchased a backup camera setup for it. Got that wired in last week, and what a huge improvement. So trying to do what we can to improve our safety and the way the guys are operating. You'll see them going around. We're trying to get them more uniformed up to where the public knows who they are when they're out and about. Along with that, one of the other things that we're really focusing on is our policies and procedures as far as our codes. And one of those that we are trying, especially right now, is, is an educational thing mainly, is our snow and ice policy. And when it comes to stockpiling snow and where we can and can't stockpile and store snow during the winter months, and the roles and responsibilities of the property owners when it comes to that. We've had a lot of positive feedback from that, but we still have a long ways to go. One of the things is the snow storage on Railroad Street. We just got notification again from BNSF that apparently some private contractors, of course, everybody assumes it's the city, but some private contractors have been stockpiling snow where they shouldn't be, where the city doesn't have a lease on Railroad Street. So now I need to work on getting that clarified, and I understand that the council all received an email, so I'm just letting you know that I am working on that. But other than that, we're looking forward to the coming year, and we got some big plans for helping to improve the city. So that's all I got for today.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Next, we'll hear from our Police Chief Kirk Blan.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Council. I don't have solid year-end total numbers yet. Cheryl and Katie are still working on those. But I know some preliminary numbers. As far as concealed pistol license applications, Cheryl and Katie processed over 100 of those this year, which is obviously up from last year. And as far as weapon transfers, 2019 was a banner year for us for the amount of weapons transfers that, that office handled. And this year, they doubled it, so there was over 200. So the gals have been very busy up front with that, those added responsibilities. As far as patrol, our overall numbers anticipated them to be much lower than last year due to all the COVID shutdowns and the bars being closed at 10 o'clock, et cetera. And it turns out that, that really wasn't the case. We're right on par with our previous years, so activity remained about the same. And wanted to thank Lucy and the DNR for thinking of us and getting up there to firewise our property. It is looking really good. Thank you, Lucy. And at the end of the month, Sergeant Rich Albo and I will be attending a class in Spokane on management, and that is the week of the 25th through the 29th. And that's all I have, unless anybody has any questions.
Okay, thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from our Fire Chief Ed Mills.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, good evening. I guess first line of business is to ask the mayor to install the new officers for 2021.
Okay, so what, what we have here is that the fire chief, this is, with this, okay, first of all, this was an undetested vote unanimously amongst the, the department. And they are selecting the officers as follows. The Fire Chief, Ed Wen Mills. The first assess, Assistant Chief is Nathan Henderson. Second Assistant Chief is Casey Orndorf. And Secretary Treasurer is Cole Lodenstein. And I'd like to, you know, appoint these with the council's approval. So.
Move that, move that we authorize the mayor to appoint the officers as read.
Second.
Okay, it moved by Stephen Harper, seconded by Matthew Lund to approve the appointment of these, the fire department officers. And so as of now, the fire chief is Ed, for Assistant is Nathan, second Assistant Chief is Casey Orndorf, and Secretary Treasurer is Cole Lodenstein. So thank you, Ed, for that. You guys did a great job.
Can we call? Mr. Mayor.
Oh, I guess I.
Question. We need to actually vote, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm just moving right along, alright. Okay, so, uh, questions on the motion? Boy. I'm sure taking a lot for granted tonight, aren't I? So, hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now it is official. Thank you, guys. I want to thank Ed and all the officers. You know, you guys are doing a great job. It's, it's a, it's, it's a, it's a quite an important service you provide for us, and I really do appreciate it on behalf of the city. So go ahead, what do you got?
Well, thank you, City Council and Honorable Mayor, and we look forward to serving the citizens of Clayellum for the year of 2021. Report of calls, we had 37 calls for the month of December. Thirty of those were EMS. We had two hazardous conditions. One service call, one good intent, two false alarms, and one burn complaint. That, that's all I've got to report for you this evening, unless anybody has any questions.
I don't see any questions. Thank you, Ed.
Thank you.
Okay, and then next we'll have, we'll hear from our viola treatment operator, William LaRue.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. In your package, you should find my usual graphs. Really nothing too startling there. The water plant was pretty much on par for 2020 as we were for 2019 in December. Actually, down a little bit in our production, which brings our runtimes down as well. Wastewater plant was a little bit higher to the tune of 7 million gallons this December over 2019. Overall, just kind of recap a little bit of 2020. I'm sure glad it's over and done with. But at the treatment plant, we produced 433 million gallons for the year 2020. The wastewater treatment plant treated 3 million, excuse me, 343 million gallons. Runtime for the, the water plant was 4,832 hours or an average of 13.2 hours per day. And of course, the wastewater plant runs 24 hours a day. So we had 8,760 hours of runtime there at the treatment plant. Rainfall, we've started calculating or totaling up for both facilities. Up at the water plant, we had 27.98 inches recorded for the year versus 25.35 down at the wastewater plant. Our average river level for the year, 5.28 feet. We, between the two plants, completed a total of 2,009 work orders, which equates out to about one work order completed every hour of the day. Just some fun little totals there for the, for the year end. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Actually, I have a question. This is.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Hey, Willie, I was wondering, do we have plenty of capacity to handle the growth that's going to happen in Clayellum, where are we going to need to make some adjustments?
On which end, Beth?
Well, we're going to be expanding north of Clayellum and then Bullfrog Flats also. So I was wondering, do we have enough water available, or ability to produce enough water and also handle the water that's going to be coming through the septic systems?
We should be okay. The biggest problem on the water side is going to be instantaneous demand. Just on quick calculations, when Bullfrog is built out, there's no way that we'll be able to provide water through a pipeline. We are going to need to have reservoirs in addition to what we have now.
Okay.
On the wastewater side, you know, last year, we had instantaneous flows of, of close to 9 million gallons for one day's operation when we had that rain on snow event. So, normal capacity of the plant is 3.6 million a day. So we're going to be, we're going to have some challenges with it, I think, to be honest with you. We have the capacity, but it's going to be, it's going to be interesting.
Maxed out, pretty much, then, it sounds like.
We may be close to it, yes.
Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Any other questions for William? Okay, William, thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, so now we're down to citizen comments on non-agenda items, and I know ahead of time that, oh, let's see. Well, so, anyone who wishes to address the council, let's see if we can figure out how to get your attention. Let's see. So I would, I, I heard earlier from our city clerk that, whose name I cannot remember, but it says Suzanne. Yes.
Yes, I'm Jim Schuman.
Jim Schuman there, thank you for that, Jim. Usually, we try to keep it to five minutes, you know, so say what you got to say.
Yeah, I think I just have brief two minutes. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Jim Schuman. I appeared before you in November to request your approval to replace my failing septic tank. I was told that on Wednesday, this issue will be a topic of discussion at your utility commission meeting. I hope that realizing the fact that city sewer is not available at my location, you will see fit to grant my request. In a conversation that I had this week with your previous and recently retired public work supervisor, that under his tenure, you have allowed several properties with failing systems to repair or replace their systems. Again, thank you for your time and consideration of my issue. I look forward to hearing from you in the future after your meeting. That's all I have to say for this evening.
Okay, thank, thank you, Jim. And then, let's see, is there any others that wish to address the council on non-agenda items? And Kathy, you, can you tell me, who was the other person that told you they wanted to speak?
I don't know that she wanted to speak, but the individual who applied for the taxi service was going to be in attendance, I think, just to listen.
Okay, okay, I see. Is there any, anyone else that's on this meeting that wishes to address the council on non-agenda items? I know that's, I'll just give them a little bit of time. Most people have kind of figure out the mute button, but I don't hear anyone else. So we're going to move on from citizen comments. So now we're down to public appearances, and we'll hear on the Crystal Creek study, we'll hear from Mark, Mark Cook and Arden Thomas.
Good evening, City of Ellensburg, City Council and Mayor. First of all, thank you for having Director Cook and I here today to go over the results of the Crystal Creek Flood Study. I'm here on behalf of the Flood Control Zone District. So in my professional capacity, I administer floodplain regulations within unincorporated Kitata County, and then also help implement the work of the Flood Control Zone District, which includes projects and work both in unincorporated and the incorporated limits. And another kind of key thing I like to emphasize is that we also provide technical assistance to residents located throughout the county, including within unincorporated and incorporated areas. So, the Flood Control Zone District has been working with FEMA as cooperative technical partners to do a series of flood studies focused on key tributaries within the Yakima River Basin. And these flood studies enable us to utilize the, the latest technology for flood risk modeling, develop detailed studies, and then we also translate these, the results from these studies into FEMA-approved updated flood maps. Our original focus was in Lower Kitata County, but since we are a district for the whole, the whole county, we really were soliciting kind of where to go next, to next, in terms of where would there be a benefit in Upper Kitata County. And we, we heard back that Crystal Creek was of interest. There's concerns about the quality of the existing flood maps. And unfortunately, these maps were, are relatively old. They were developed in the late 70s, and they are not as accurate as we need them, for them to be. Mayor McGowan was just pointing out that in places, it maps the wrong side of the coal mines trail as being within the floodway, for example. So, so about a year ago, we kicked off the study. The Flood Control Zone District hires consultants who are professionals in this type of work. And we kicked things off by first meeting in February with some, some staff from City of, City of Clayellum, City of Roslyn, and then other recommended individuals who could provide firsthand information about flooding concerns. And we had our consultants there for that meeting, and that was our first step. The next thing that we did is that we utilized county forces to go out and to survey all the places where the Crystal Creek encounter some sort of crossing. This could be a road, this could be where Crystal Creek crosses the Coal Mines Trail, for example. And we use that information along with LiDAR to, to provide some really detailed information on which to model. And then the, the consultants moved forward and did their work. I will say that during the February flooding, I did go out. It wasn't a 100-year event, but it was a good opportunity to go out and just see local impacts for, for flooding and, and pass that information along to our consultants. And today, we have the information to share. In your materials, you've received a memo from Director Cook and myself, kind of going over high level, some of the results from the study. We included draft copies, these have not been finalized yet, of the technical report that our consultants provided to us. And then we provided the work map that covered the City of Clayellum area, and also an example of some outreach materials that the Flood Control Zone District has provided in the past. As detailed in our memo, something that we have an eye on are different mapping categories that are identified by FEMA, because they do have implications for landowners and jurisdictions. You have to implement floodplain regulations. The one mapping type that we're aware of that often causes some concerns within communities, honestly, is designation called a floodway. So floodway had previously been mapped in the City of Clayellum, and this has the highest, I would say, regulatory requirements associated with it. There's a state-level requirement that no new residences can be placed in floodways, and it's really hard to do other types of projects there as well. And what we, what we found through this study is that there was no need to expand the flood, the, the footprint of the floodway. And in areas, it was actually reduced based on more detailed understanding. Our next kind of category of, of mapping type is what we call 100-year floodplain. These are the areas that have a 1% chance of flooding each year. And we saw, I would, I would characterize it as some refinements in terms of the footprint of that area. refinements in terms of the footprint of that area. Um, there are areas where we saw that flooding would be, either there wouldn't be out-of-bank flooding, and it would be confined to just the, the Crystal Creek channel, but there are some areas where, where flooding goes out of bank. In these areas, we've used a more sophisticated modeling technique called two-dimensional flow modeling, so that we're providing the best available information in terms of what's likely to flood. Um, and something that is a refinement, um, in terms of the effort that was done before, is that for much of Crystal Creek, FEMA as part of the, their late seventies effort had utilized what's considered approximate mo- uh, model. And in that, they, they just identify a footprint, and we really have no information about how high those floodwaters might get. And it, it does make it more difficult to implement any sort of floodplain regulations, because you really have to use a cookie cutter approach. So we were able to, to really reduce, we actually eliminated that approximate designation. So every place that is, we've identified as having hundred-year floodplain, we have an elevation so that we can really provide site-specific information. The third category is considered a five-hundred-year floodplain. Um, and so, uh, this is an area that really kind of identifies that there's heightened risk of flooding. But something critical for, I think, communities to understand is that there are not any federal or state requirements in terms of how um, we regulate building within these areas. Um, that's completely at the discretion of the local jurisdiction. If you wanted to have, for example, um, heightened building standards for these five-hundred-year floodplanes, you could do that, but it's not required, nor does the government ever impose any mandatory flood insurance requirements within the five-hundred-year floodplain. Um, currently, much of the City of Ellensburg, including the, the downtown corridor, I would characterize it as mapped as being within the five-hundred-year floodplain. What we, what we learned, both by doing our more detailed modeling, and then going back and looking at the notes from the late seventies from that effort, is that what the, what the modeling was showing both had been and now, is actually during a hundred-year event, we do see that there's the risk of water coming out of bank, um, particularly in the vicinities of First and Second Street, and flowing um, into, into the City of Clealum, but they're very shallow depths. And so, it was determined as part of the original effort that rather than give that a hundred-year floodplain designation, a five-hundred-year designation would be appropriate. Um, so what we recommend is to essentially ask FEMA to maintain that same, same type of designation. Um, and then, I think that that was, those are kind of the high-level things that I wanted to cover with you. Um, one other thing I would just note is that we have this model, first of all, we have this model developed, and we can make it available for the city, you know, if they have any use for it. Um, sometimes the, the model results can be helpful, for example, for stormwater planning. Um, and then to let you know, kind of, what, what we're proposing goes next in our process. So, uh, since we received FEMA funding for this effort, and it is appropriate anytime that a community kind of has better information about flood risk for their community, we would provide this information to FEMA. We would um, work with your staff to, to request that the City of Clealum also kind of sign on to this letter of map revision, so that FEMA would consider and update their maps based on best available science. So that, that's one thing that um, we wanted to let you know is coming. And then the second thing to know, let you know, is that as part of this effort, we're proposing to um, identify any potential impacted landowners. For example, if there are landowners currently mapped with, outside of a floodplain, and this new map would bring them into one to identify those landowners and to conduct some outreach efforts. With that, I'd like to pause, I'd like to pause real quick and see if Director Cook has anything he would like to add.
Uh, thank you, Arden. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mark Cook, Public Works Director. Uh, as the Flood Control Zone District Administrator, I'm pleased that there's no new regulatory requirement for the city. That has not been our track record working in other parts of the county, so that's certainly good news for us. And I just want to extend a, a thank you, Mr. Mayor, to your staff for cooperating and assisting Arden in her effort with our consultants to get this mapping completed for you.
So, um, uh, Arden, let's see what kind of questions they might have, huh?
That sounds great.
Um, it looks like Ken Ratliff has his hand up.
Yes, uh, the city will get a copy of all these reports and uh, is there like uh, maps, GIS-type stuff that we get as a result of this? Uh, what, what does the city get?
Mm-hmm. Yes, so you will, so we've provided draft copies of the, the report that our consultants have provided, and um, the dra- draft copy of the work map that covers the Clealum area, but we're happy to essentially provide the whole packet. So the final reports, copies of all work maps, and then a copy of essentially the application that we make to FEMA for them to consider this new information. That would all be provided to the city. We have not yet received the spatial files for this information to be pulled into GIS, um, but we're happy to share that when we receive a copy. Um, I need to check and find out, in some areas, we might have some depth grids that um, can also be nice, and I'd be happy to share that, that it represents flooding as depth, which can be really useful. Um, so we're happy to, to share all of that.
Wonderful. This is Cook. I think you'll get final regulatory maps from FEMA as well. Is that correct, Arden? That's a final product the city?
Yes.
Well, thank you. This is good.
Any other questions, uh, for Arden? Um, I, well, Arden, I have to thank you. Um, it, it is gonna be really helpful for us. We do have projects we want to do on uh, the Coal Mine Trail and some of the crossings, and this will be really good foundation material to uh, do that with, and this is gonna be a big help for us. I really appreciate it. Um, I don't know if there's any other questions. Uh, I guess we'll have to just let you go for now, and uh, we'll be hearing from you real soon, I imagine.
That sounds good. Thanks for the time tonight, and if anybody has any follow-up questions, please feel free to contact me directly.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Arden.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Okay, next, uh, we don't have any business requiring public hearings, and we're gonna go down to unfinished business. And uh, what we have on here is ordinance sixteen oh one, and this is the second review, short-term rental regulations. And uh, Gary Burnt and Lucy Temple will walk the council through that.
Honorable Baron Castle, at the la- this is Gary Burnt, by the way. Um, at the last council meeting, I, I got to wondering, had not done history of how this ordinance was developed and what, what led into the causal factors of developing it. So, uh, I asked to get the information on the moratoriums and the wording, and generally the history, and I provided that to you all, to the best I know. I was not involved till the very end. But I thought it might be helpful that, what it appeared to me is that it was primary for the Planning Commission to develop this over the year, and they put a lot of time in on it. Uh, as an aside, I did read an article in the Ellensburg Daily Record that the Shalan County Commissioners are looking at the same sort of an ordinance for the unincorporated. And my thought was that Leavenworth would have one of the better ones. My understanding is Leavenworth just um, allows none of these within the city limits, City of Leavenworth. I have not verified that. At any rate, uh, that's a history. Um, I'm here, I would check it to Lucy. If you have questions or various things we need to continue to investigate, I'll capture that, and we will take it back to the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, Lucy, what do you got to say here?
Hi, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Gary. I included a, just an overview um, staff report, just to show that Gary did present a history of the code development, and then the rest of the packet material on this is from the December fourteenth short-term rental packet. So there's no new information other than that one document from Commissioner Burnt. So, um, you know, it's yours to review.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask Matthew, what, what are you thinking?
Uh, I, I had time to absorb, but I appreciate the extra time. I only had two things. One is just a Scribner's error, I think, in here, under E on, hang on, I have to find it again. Item two in a local contact person, it's, it references a definition for local contact person that I looked everywhere trying to find when I was reading this and realized it's up in B six. So I think it's just, it may have been an old reference from an earlier draft. Um, but the other, the only question that I had was on parking. Uh, there was in here, it says there has to be two onsite parking spaces um, available. Is there any um, consideration given to folks who may be able to say, uh, lease a parking space from someone else off-site, um, that that would, that would be allowed? Or do they, do they have to have two onsite parking spaces in order for this to be them to qualify?
I'd ask that Gary respond to that, or that we ask the commission, because I don't recall their decision-making process for the off, the on, the off-street parking. Do you recall, Gary?
No, uh, but what I would suspect, and I would be happy to take back and clarify, um, is that if those can be dedicated as available for short-term rental, um, potentially off-site, I think the whole issue was to not plug up the neighborhood, um, wherever it's at with people parking there. And uh, we actually talked about more than two parking places, it gets very difficult. We also talked about not tearing up the lawn to create a parking space. And so, uh, I would be happy to take that question back. We're meeting on the nineteenth, and I could get you that if, if you wish, but I think that, that's what I would, I would imagine, anyway.
Yeah, I don't necessarily want to hold up the process, it's just a question. I just know if I, you know, if I have a Airbnb or whatever it is, a short-term rental here in town, and I have an extra space at my home, and somebody could sort of permanently park a car in while they're staying, that seems like that could, that could work. And uh, if I have a property that doesn't have offsite parking, which would then stop them from tearing up the lawn or other things to, to create another space. So that was my only, that was my only question or feedback.
Again, if, if you wish, we can proceed with that. Now, verify if you'd like.
Stephen, you, uh, we're gonna have a comment, I think?
Oh, just that, in a simple thinking note, it over, I think it makes sense to keep it within the property. When you start, uh, you know, having across the street or across the way parking and stuff like that, it's a lot harder to verify and approve on the front end. And then, you know, one of those agreement goes into place, and then maybe the agreement goes out of the way, and there's really not a way for the city to be able to police that, if you will, where it's a lot easier. I know it's a burden on the landowner, but at the same time, it keeps our, our neighborhoods quiet when they're walking straight from the property to another spot on the property. It's also a security consideration. And so I, I felt quite comfortable uh, with point number ten, um, how it's worded. I think it, it's in the, in the other land, you know, the, the city's best interest.
Any other comments from the council?
I have a couple.
Okay, that sounds like Mickey.
Yeah, you know, as we go forward in this, I, I think that one thing we'd have to take a look at, we're a little different than the Leavenworth and Shalan. Uh, we're kind of a niche. By niche, I mean, we're forty-five minutes to an hour from metropolitan area. Uh, people can leave there, and they can be on a trail, they can leave at eight o'clock in the morning, be on a trail at ten, ten thirty on there. So, long-term staying where they're gonna be here for a week or two weeks or there, is a wonderful thing if they can come and just stay for a couple, three days like they can in short-term rental. And uh, I think we need to fill the niche, but the one thing that bothers me a little bit is we have these developments that are looking at joining, joining into the City of Clealum. And I think you're gonna find that, uh, these people, when they're developing these properties, they're talking about, you know, actually selling these peoples on the idea of putting a short-term rentals in. And uh, uh, I, I, I don't know how to do there, but I, 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 there is a possibility we could shoot ourselves in the foot here. And I think that has to be taken into account, too. And I don't know if it needs to be taken into account, but it's just a thought I have. Now, on the uh, uh, Shalan that we have there, Gary has written in here, uh, the Daily Record that Cleal County is uh, developing a set of reg- of, of regulations for the unincorporated area of Shalan County. The number is having, having an impact on available housing in the county. Now, a lawsuit up there has been brought on this, uh, from my research, and this was just happened that Gary had this here. And what it, it felt is the long-term rentals on the lake, meaning the people that rent their, their lakefront property for the summer, or they rent it for a month, uh, are getting beat out by the short-term rentals, which uh, bring people in every week, or uh, sometimes couples twice a week. And that's what the lawsuit over there in the county is over. And it really, there is, anyone's familiar, I think we're all familiar with Lake Shalan, but it's, it's a huge lake, and uh, it takes up quite a bit. And uh, I think, I think, you know, we are a uh, uh, destination resort here. Uh, we are close to, close to sea. Uh, it looks to me like the short-term rentals is just a great industry for people to get into. And there is one thing, when I read the biologs here, I didn't see it tonight, but in one of them that I read, they, they were talking about uh, uh, when you sell your home, or your homes, if you have more than one short-term rental, you can't sell your business license with it. I, I think that, which I'd like to take a hard look at the ones that have, that they can sell their business license with it if they'd like. Uh, I think it's only fair. Uh, these people work hard to put these together. It's not easy to run one of these, and that's all I have to say.
Okay, um, what's the wish of the council? Um, are you ready to uh, pass this? Do you want to send it back? What do you think? Stephen?
I would move that we approve ordinance number sixteen oh one as presented and enacted, establishing chapter seventeen point one sixty of our code.
Second?
Take a second.
Okay, it's uh, moved and seconded, it was moved by Stephen and seconded by, uh, hang on a minute, Matthew? By Matthew, seconded?
Yep.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the short-term rental. Uh, I'm looking for the actual ordinance here, so I can do it. And then Lucy, I'll get to you in just a second. Um, so the motion was to uh, to adopt ordinance sixteen oh one, is that right, Stephen? Yes. Okay, uh, Lucy, you, you have a, we're, we're, okay, it's moved and seconded. Uh, so now, uh, questions on the motion. Lucy, you got something you want to say? Lucy, you got something you want to say?
Yes. Kelson Lund pointed out that there's a Scrivener's error in the document. So I will need to go in and make that change and that may need a modified motion.
So then what we'll ask, uh, Stephen to amend his motion to allow the correction of the Scrivener's error.
Can you, can we just have clarification on that error?
Yes. It is on line one zero seven on page ten of that packed item. It's under E two, local contact person. At the end of that paragraph, there's a reference that says, see local contact person definition in four I above. That four I needs to be changed to B six because the pagination and the numbering changed over time and I just have to change that reference. Doesn't change anything.
That I would, that I would amend my motion. Then, can you rescind your second? That'll make it simpler.
Yes, I rescind my second.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm going to motion then that we adopt ordinance sixteen oh one as presented, but with the verbal, uh, with the verbal allowance that we correct the Scrivener's error on line one oh seven. Let's take a second.
Second.
Okay, move the seconded to adopt ordinance sixteen oh one with the correction of the error on Scrivener's error. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Posed.
No.
Uh, so, uh, Mickey, uh,
Yeah, definitely.
Okay, well, it's,
I hate to just shock yourself in the foot myself.
Oh, that's all right. So, uh, it's, uh, six to one, uh, the motion passes and we will sign the ordinance. Okay, moving on, uh, is, uh, the Chamber Commerce Contract, Stephen, uh, let's see, uh, let's see, this says twenty twenty-one LTCA Chamber Commerce Contract, Contract. And, uh, Stephen will, uh, address that. And I do have a request from, uh, oh, let's see, let's see, let's see, where are, where, from, uh, Amy and McGuffin would like to, uh, uh, join in on a conversation with this, if that's okay, Steve. You're muted, Stephen.
Okay. Uh, certainly be welcome to her comments before and then I can present, uh, what we have before you.
I'm looking for you, uh, Amy.
I am here, thank you.
There you are.
Mr. Mayor and councilman, uh, council members, uh, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to, um, come here tonight. I'm just, uh, wanting to start the comments of, um, thank you to Rob, uh, for finally sending me the contract for review today at noon. I was not privy to that contract for review, so most of the discussion tonight is without involvement from the chamber, other than a phone call from Councilmember Harper explaining the situation and what the determination of the committee. So I would ask that, um, during this conversation, if there's any questions directed to the chamber that we have the opportunity to speak in regards to.
Okay, take it away, Stephen.
Yeah, so, um, I think basically where our committee has gone is in reviewing the, the nature of the chamber's contract, um, for the foreseeable future. We want to see the visitor center, uh, go on pretty much unaltered and the administration of the contract. But the part that we felt like there was, uh, need of revising this year, um, was in the area of the social media communication and a large, uh, portion of the contract, about forty-nine thousand total, uh, was spent on that, um, in previous years and was allocated, um, as presented by the chamber. And it was just the feeling of our, uh, council, armament of our, uh, committee that we can stand behind that same amount this year that we felt like it could be strategically handled in, in other ways. And so we diminished the portion of that, uh, down to, um, down to, to five thousand from, uh, forty-nine thousand, uh, making the balance of the, of the contract less by that amount. And, uh, we feel like it's a good contract, it was well-written by the chamber. The only, I believe, uh, addition, um, was that under section three, we, uh, added, uh, maintain affiliated social media accounts with regular organic, uh, content posts, uh, that obligation was never spelled out, though it was well. The chamber always did a good job of, of doing that. There's no question as to the chamber's, uh, you know, performance of contractual obligations or going above and beyond contractual obligations. We just felt like that was not an emphasis that we wanted to, uh, recommend to council this year, uh, in the amount that it was. And so that, uh, is kind of my comments, um, on the, on the contract. And I believe that it's a good contract and I would recommend, uh, to the mayor, um, that, that he sign it and present it to the chamber for acceptance.
I got a question.
Well, say, hang on, uh, that, oh, go ahead.
What was the four, forty-three thousand dollars being used for? Is that just rental or what, Steve?
No, no, forty, it was forty-four thousand was being used to do, uh, active, um, social media marketing of Clealum as a destination. And because of the nature of this year, um, you know, we've, we, this conjecture, but I think that if we, uh, as we look at, you know, different factors, one of the things, uh, that we saw this year was a Mac, a mass exodus, uh, from the Seattle area to Clealum's area. The question is whether that was driven, um, or accentuated extremely by digital marketing or by the fact that people don't want to live in Seattle and that they love our area. And so our thought is for the, at least the foreseeable future, the next twelve months that we're gonna, that we would, uh, do well to continue to ride that wave of people coming to Clealum as a destination, not because it was digitally marketed to them, but because it was, uh, uh, because they're wanting to flee, uh, the Seattle and the, you know, the restrictive environment that's over there.
Are we gonna do it without any advertising this year at all, then?
Just diminish, we've just diminished that amount from forty-nine thousand down to five thousand and we're suggesting recirculating the organic posts rather than creating new content.
Ruston has a comment.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm actually a little bit concerned that i- in this new normal we have in COVID nineteen with no end in sight, that we want for COVID nineteen right now, that we want to diminish our digital marketing campaign for the city of Clealum. I, I think the digital marketing helps remind visitors. I, I was on my own Facebook account today and got invited to go to Idaho to sit in Hot Springs. I already go to Idaho, but this is a good reminder from the state of Idaho or whomever their marketing person was to say, hey, don't forget about us. It's a great blanket method to cover thousands of people during COVID nineteen. We're, by saying, hey, we're gonna cut from forty-nine thousand to five thousand, I feel like we're shooting ourselves in the foot. I, I mean, we should spend more money to market this town and our small businesses. Small businesses are already struggling and I think any marketing, digital or otherwise helps. And I think we have to create new digital marketing to help promote our town. This town is struggling and I think that saying, no, we're not gonna take this money and use it for this right now could be a mistake. How else we get our city message out to other people on the other side of the, the paths? I mean, it's, we're a tourist town and I think it's cavalier to say, hey, they're gonna come here anyway. I think that we need reminders out there, like, don't forget, Clealum's here. You know, July is right around the corner, all these events could reopen in, uh, the gorge. Don't forget to stay in Clealum, spend your money in Clealum, say hi to Clealum. And I think, um, cutting the budget that has been forty to fifty thousand dollars since two thousand and eleven to the chamber could be a mistake that could hurt the businesses in Clealum, Washington.
Okay. Other comments?
Can I respond?
Um, let's, let's let, uh, other, hang on, Stephen, uh, is there any other, uh, thoughts the council has? Other, okay, Matthew, go ahead.
I just, uh, pipe up to say that I'm, and I'm on the lodging tax committee, so I was involved in these discussions before we brought this. I agree that, you know, I, I know that all summer, it seemed like every day was a weekend here, not just the weekends. And I think a lot of that was because people had a lot more ability to travel because they were untethered by their office space, kids weren't necessarily in school, uh, doing online school and so, uh, but on the, on the flip side, I drive across the state all the time and, uh, I see big reader boards that says, stay home, stay healthy, uh, limit travel. And so I, I, I also think it's, uh, maybe not the best time for us to be advertising to people fifty miles away and more because we're not supposed, they're not supposed to be traveling here right now. But ultimately, um, this is not a forever thing, we can always modify this contract. But I think the, um, the intent here is to really do a deep dive into, um, how we're going to do this going forward and, uh, hit the pause button while we sort of have time to do that, um, uh, before we, you know, before hopefully things lighten up here at some point. So.
And, and I respect that completely, but I also think that people are planning vacations now for July. People are planning vaca, I'm planning my summer vacations now i- in hopes that COVID will go away or restrictions will lighten to a point where I can go back to vacation. We also, I mean, if I would ask, are, do, do our lodging tax funds need this forty-three thousand dollars? Or is this money that we can spend to help promote the town as people are still going to travel in the near future? I mean, I realize we could amend it in July, but why wait and why not start that campaign for, hey, hiking, biking, motorcycles, river rafting? Keep that fresh in people's minds or don't let them stop in North Bend or don't let them pass us by to go to, to Leavenworth or Shalane. We need to make sure those dollars are trapped here for our local businesses, hotels, restaurants, shopping, otherwise. That, that's all I have to say.
Stephen, go ahead.
Yeah, and I, and I definitely hear that concern. Can we use it? We definitely have strategic, um, objectives that could certainly use that. At the same time, um, I'll just tell you my personal opinion and I'll say it out loud is I'd love to scrap, you know, and I'm not, I'm not advocating it right now, but personally, I'd love to scrap it all and create a, uh, you know, a chamber or some type of contract. We're living in a totally different time and events have to be done totally differently and they could get a whole lot more expensive. I'd rather see events and be known as an event place and pour all of our money into facilitating events that can be done in a COVID-safe way or COVID-allowed way, et cetera. But I think that for this year, we're just gonna continue to see the, the harsh regulation and the beat down, I don't know another way to put it, from Olympia, from the Department of Transportation, from, you know, the county's getting better, but the county still has restrictions. And I don't see that lightening up in light of, uh, in light of what's happening in Washington, DC. I think that you're gonna see for the next hundred days, things go much more, I would, I would hope it doesn't, but things are much more of a standstill. And so having that forty-four thousand able to be spent in a more creative way to draw people in than just simply blanketing social media, especially with the landscape of social media changing as it has even in the last couple of days. And so sitting down and listening and maybe having another conversation with the chamber and saying, you know what, let's look at digital marketing as a totally separate thing. And maybe we want to put more money into it, but something where it's more defined than a, I mean, it, as far as, uh, contractual obligations, it wasn't even listed on the original draft and it was forty-nine thousand dollars of the budget. There was not a, and so we, we did put a general, uh, you know, maintain affiliated social media accounts. Again, not saying that it wasn't done by the chamber, they did good and they excelled and they did it in a very professional, uh, way. There's no disparaging as far as, uh, their past performance, but it's something where we think we need to sit down and to look at this and rethink it. And we've, we've been offered suggestions of, uh, you know, um, I forget the terminology, but basically where we try to market people that are traveling to Clealum so that they'll check us out as a place to build a business or to build a, you know, like, uh, manufacturing and different stuff like that. And so, um, rethinking our marketing strategy and not doing it in the busy October, November season. And so it could be done right now when we're in our kind of lull of everybody's trying to figure out the new year, we could have something, I mean, if the chamber and us wanted to get, to get, get our minds together and think around this, we could, uh, we could easily have a different strategy in a month, um, so that we're not tying up the funds, we're liberating them.
I, I guess I would challenge, what, what do you think five thousand dollars? How far do you think five thousand dollar goes in, in social mark, social marketing? I, I mean, five thousand dollars is a, is nothing. I mean, that's really nothing. And I think they need a budget, we need a budget, the city needs a budget to social marketing. It is the way we have shifted to market anyway, and now in COVID more than ever. I think things like the, the visitor center are a mute point. You know, I've traveled everywhere and I travel a ton and I do not ever stop at a visitor center for a pamphlet anymore. I get on my phone and I, I try to Google it or I'll follow a link that was sent to me. But again, um, I, I, I understand where you're coming from as well. However, there are several businesses in our, our town and our community that will get hurt by losing extra marketing.
The, the beauty of, um, that is you will be able to still pull up all of those articles, the website that they have with lots of great evergreen content will exist. The idea behind the five thousand dollars is to allow them to continue to recycle all of that great content that we have and we have a lot of it, to be able to continue putting out regular posts on, on, uh, the social media platforms that they've built up so that it's not, they don't go dark because we don't want them to go dark. But we're, we're not talking about, uh, actually doing, um, outward marketing or putting money behind those posts and boosting those posts for, for a simplified term, but there will still be lots of activity on those social, uh, media platforms as well as all of that information will still be there if somebody searches.
How do you stay relevant? How do you stay relevant if you recycle the same posts in a, in a COVID era? How can we stay relevant by recycling the same old posts? Things, I mean, we've all seen this, things could change so drastically in two weeks from now that we have to remarket how we are selling our town.
Well, the, the posts are, the posts are trails to hike on, places to go eat, things to do. So that's, that's what goes, that's a lot of what goes out there. So those things aren't gonna change. I mean, I guess a trail could close, but those are, you know, but, but we're not, we're not advertising a specific business. It's, here's great places to go wine taste or to, you know, have dinner or those things. So it's generic enough that those things are still going to be relevant.
Yeah, I disagree. I mean, I, I disagree respectfully.
Yeah, hang on, hang on, you guys. Mickey, uh, wants to,
You know, you know, I, I can understand Steve, Steve trying to save some money here and going on there, but the point I'd like to make is advertisement does not start up again. If you remember, we were happy at one time when we got three thousand hits on it. You know, now we're up to twenty, twenty-five thousand hits on our, our, on our computer to come to, or look at, uh, look at Cleal. And, and it took us a year to build up, but you know, we jump out of it for a year, we're back to zero and the people that stay in it are gonna be going there. And, you know, you drive by Mike's Tavern down there, I'm gonna use that. And there's people literally sitting in their heavy jackets in the rain and even when it was snowing, they're sitting out there in the snow, having a drink, shooting the breeze with people. People don't have a lot of places to go. We're real close, we're just, uh, we're just an hour away from Seattle now they can get into a different neighborhood. But, but if, if Kobe goes away, they're gonna go further. We're not advertising, they've forgotten about us. And, and just to bring those people in for just that short haul so they can get away forty-five, fifty minutes away, two or three hours by the time they have a, have a drink at Mike's and go back down there and drive home. and drive home, they had time out of their house. People are going nuts in their house and we got to advertise to get them out. And, and I think, I think it's just, uh, I don't know. Stephen, you're usually right. I think you're just wrong on this one. I mean, you know, I, 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 but I think, I think we need to spend the money. I really do. We gotta keep after it.
Matthew?
Respectfully, that's, that, that won't, it won't go to zero. I mean, it will because we're not putting the money in, but, uh, we could turn the ads on at any given point. And, uh, if you put money behind it, it will be seen. I, I.
No, no.
It's what I do for a living. I respectfully, I can say that that's the case. I would also say.
My whole life, Stephen.
One at a time.
My whole life and it does not start up that quick.
Okay, okay. Uh, so the, the other point that I wanted to make, uh, was that, uh, we're not advocating to stop doing this all year. We are looking to potentially make some changes in how we do this. And one of those ways might be actually bringing some of this in-house. One of the discussions we look to have soon is, uh, potentially funding a person who would be on staff, who would not only manage, uh, this portion, but also potentially do some external communications for the city in, in sort of a PIO role. Cause I think everyone, uh, kind of go into that we can do a better job, uh, with external communications, um, locally as well. So that, that's the idea. It's something we're going to look to put a job description together for soon and, and hopefully get out. So this is not a, we're cutting this forever. This is a, we're putting pause so we know we have that money reserved. Hopefully be able to put towards that person and we can get somebody in sooner than later.
So I'll just start that. I'll, I'll just say like, so the businesses that have been struggling through this, the breweries in town, some of the restaurants in town that have spent money on buying tents and putting tents up and buying heaters and buying oil and buying firewood to barely make it through. They are the ones that need to continue to remind people that Clealum isn't shut down. $5,000 a year hurts our small businesses. Period. We have a good, we have a group that's doing it. I think you put this off for a year. And if we want to be a little more involved with the digital marketing and the chamber, then maybe we, we put in a liaison that follows it a little closer. I think currently Madison Ford does a very good job with, explains to us where the money's gone. We can see increases. You know, the city of, uh, the county of Kitterattas actually increased their budget by 15%. They didn't cut it. They increased it by 15% for 2021. So there are some thought to not taking away, it's $43,000 from lodging tax fund, which is flush. So the money doesn't have to go there. So I think to cut it right now in the middle of COVID while people are scrambling to save their own hides is going to hurt them.
Stephen, you have a comment?
My recommendation then is that we bring this back to the committee. And if that's, if that truly is the feeling, I mean, I'm going to ask that we vote, I'm going to ask that we vote the contract like it is. And if it's voted down, then I would take that as a sign that we need to rewrite it. And honestly, I would think the sign then is everybody's so excited about digital marketing and everybody's down with, uh, with, you know, reconsidering a visitor center so concretely, especially in light of the fact that we have to follow such stringent protocols. And we don't think it's an extreme drawer of people to the city. Maybe we need to reconsider that portion, put it back into the digital marketing. Where I think a more sane way of dealing with the digital marketing is like with the lodging tax committee. You have a lot of nonprofits that come, but nothing excludes for profits. If they can prove that they're drawing people from 50 miles away and that they're advertising out there, nothing stops them from applying to the city individually, getting grants from the lodging tax committee. Somebody came to me, a local business came in and said, I'm trying to advertise to people outside of 50 miles and I'm able to fulfill all the other requirements. Nothing stops us from trying, I mean, have a monthly event, have a weekly event and have us, you know, basically enable the, the actual business themselves to directly market customers out there. I'd be more in favor of that, but I, I am going to seek, I, I, I'm going to motion that we authorize the mayor to sign, uh, this contract. And I'll seek a second because I'd like to see how that vote pulls out.
Second. All right, it's moved by Stephen Harper and is seconded by Matthew Lund to accept the, the contract as presented between the city and the Kitterattas County Chamber of Commerce. Questions on the motion?
I'll just comment. Nothing stops the chamber or nothing, nothing forces the chamber to put their signature on this either. So we could, either way, whether it's voted up or down, we could be back at the drawing board, you know, in 24 hours.
Well, that, that's scary because we are not in a position with, with business way it is. I mean, people are fighting to stay in business. And Steve, now is not the time to invent the wheel. I, I'll go with you all the way next year when things are rolling and we can do there. I honestly will. But it is just not the time to, to try something different. I don't think.
Any other questions on the motion?
Yeah, I have a question on the, on the motion. A question on the contract. What brought them to the dollar amount of 5,000? Where did that number come from?
So we felt like that was a sufficient amount that would allow a consistent reposting. And, uh, because again, we didn't want it to dry out, but, and we wanted movement enough that, you know, people that were organically seeking us would be able to, you know, continue to see fresh content. Our, our, I believe our belief, our overriding belief is while you see 25,000 hits, we see 20,000 crawlers hitting our site. Regular organic hits, we're not sure is amounting to that huge amount. And so that's why, uh, we felt like enough to keep us alive and not kill our social media presence, presence, but enough to save us and allow us to redirect however we see fit throughout the year. Um, yeah.
All right, well, I, 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 we can make a vote. I, I can't support this and I can't openly harm small businesses in this town.
Russ, and answered your question directly, the $5,000. I mean, really what we're talking about is somebody sitting down and scheduling posts out for the month. That should take, you know, maybe an hour or two each month. So we thought that was a sufficient amount to get that done.
Okay. Any other questions? Council? Uh, if not, all those in favor with aye. And I'll tell you what, let's do a poll.
I think we're ready to roll count.
What's that?
Let's do a roll count.
Yeah, that's what I was going to do. Kathy, um, would you do a, a roll count for us, please?
Matthew Lund.
Aye.
John Glondo.
Aye.
Ruston Weaver.
Nay.
Stephen Harper.
Aye.
Mickey Holtz.
Nay.
Beth Williams.
Aye.
Ken Ratliff.
Aye.
Okay, we have, uh, five ayes and two nays.
Okay. Matthew, uh, that.
Four to three. I thought that was three nays.
And I don't think it counts right.
Yeah, can, can you reclarify your vote?
Nay.
Okay. It is four to three.
Aye. And with that, I pledge diligence to, uh, to definitely, uh, get in contact with, uh, the, the committee and, uh, to work, uh, quickly to move forward, uh, with the wishes of this council. I think it's been clearly communicated that, uh, this is not the end. We're not putting this to the bed until the end of the year. We're going to get right on it.
So you'll report back, uh?
Next meeting, next meeting. We will have action, we'll have an actionable item by next meeting.
Okay, so, uh, the, the motion passed with a poll vote of four, uh, for that are for it and three that are against it. And, uh, the committee will report at the next meeting on the action they're going to take. Okay. Uh, moving on, uh, we have, uh, Stephen, you want to, uh, give us a update on the, uh, taxi service at, uh, application?
Yes. So we appreciate a taxi service looking into our rules and going above and beyond the call of duty and, uh, keeping us on our feet. And so, um, the, the recommendation, it says recommend approval of Monica Gray's taxi application for her transportation. So actually what we're recommending is Rob has made an application in the absence of one. She's given us, uh, all kinds of information that make us feel very confident that it'll be a, a simple, um, that it'll be a, a simple application. Uh, she'll fill out the application and, uh, that will, um, grant it based on all the other information that we've seen. But we did not have a formal application process. Now we have an application, uh, made up by Rob. And so we're, um, simply presenting it to the, uh, council that we, uh, that we give her the application. It'll basically, she'll fill it out. She'll hand it to an ASC certified mechanic. She'll, it'll pass or fail and then it'll be a matter of record with the city.
Okay. Um, and I don't think that the only, I don't think there's any vote required on this. It's simply, uh, according to the, uh, it's a yea or nay come, uh, by the, by the committee report. So there's a process.
So our, it's, yeah, it's a yea. We're, we're, we're accepting, we're approving her, uh, the documentation she's given and giving her a green light to go forward and we're seeking the council's approval. Or we're reporting on it then, I guess, if we don't need the council's.
All you have to do is report on it and that they've created an administrative process to, uh, deal with this taxi application. All right. Thank you.
Done a great job.
Yeah. Okay. So now, uh, we're at number 10 on the, uh, the agenda and we will be going into executive session. And, uh, what I'll do here is, uh, I'll read, I have this, uh, executive session, uh, form that I fill out every time. And, uh, so the city council, uh, will, will, will now meet in executive sessions for a period of 30 minutes to discuss with legal counsel representing, uh, the agency litigation or potential litigation to which the agency, the government body or a member acting in official capacity is or is likely to become a party pursuant to RCW 42.30.110I. Now we will, uh, we will come out of executive session and we will, uh, take action. Now, if we have to have additional time, we will bring everyone back into the meeting and we will say how much more time we need and we'll go back into executive session. So it takes us a few minutes to, uh, to get into, you know, to, well, what we'll do is everybody else who's, everyone who's on the, uh, uh, on the Zoom meeting tonight will get put in a waiting room. And then when we open it up from executive session, we'll let everybody back into the meeting. So, uh, uh, it looks to me like, uh, it is, uh, 7:25. So we back at, uh, 7:55. Okay, Rob, uh, perform your magic.
Okay, I will start putting people into the, uh, waiting room and those people will just start to see a white space. So, uh, it'll just take me a minute here. As people, uh, keep moving around on me. Whoop.
Whoop.
So this, this is harder than I thought. Um, people keep moving around on me and then I accidentally put, uh, Alex in the waiting room. So hold on.
Nice job.
Oh, I'm.
Everybody stays put.
I'm sorry, I went to the.
Oh, no.
I didn't even think about that.
Okay, does, uh, does that look correct?
I think that Lucy Temple should be in the, uh.
Okay, got it.
So we have Alex and Greg Dorn and one, two, three, four, five. Okay, um, that looks good. Okay.
Yeah, and also do the live stream. So let's take a few minutes to get everybody back.
I'm back.
Okay, Beth's back.
All right, my.
Okay. I, I think everybody's back and we're all recording again.
I hear somebody talking in the background. Um, okay, um, we, uh, ended the executive session at 7:55. Uh, it took us a minute to get everybody back in the meeting. And, uh, we will continue with us, our regular meeting. So with the council's, uh, approval, I know that there's a lot of people waiting to hear our, uh, I'd like to meet, I'd like to move under new business, item number C, recreation parcel agreement with Suncadia up for, for discussion at this point. Is that, uh?
Some of, some of.
Yeah, I was going to motion to that effect. So yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's moved to seconded, uh, to move, uh, item number C to the top of the list under new business for discussion. Questions, motion?
Okay, okay.
All in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Aye, aye, aye.
Okay, that's great. I'm beginning to see how this works. Those opposed, hearing none, uh, we will now, uh, move, uh, recreation parcel agreements on KDA up. Who, who would like to, uh, take the floor on that, Stephen?
Yeah. So what we have before us is essentially, uh, what we proposed at, uh, last meeting, with the exception that the final date is, uh, December 31st, 2028. After consideration of the possible litigation and, uh, the time that that could take and the cost and expense to the city, I am recommending that we accept the recreational parcel agreement as presented to the city. It has, uh, and, and then I would second it for discussion. Second, or I would look, seek a second, yeah.
Okay, so moved by Stephen Harper and seconded by Ken Ratliff to authorize the mayor to sign the amended recreational parcel agreement. And what it changed was the ultimate, what it changed from our submittal to them was the date is, uh, 2028. Is that motion clear to everybody?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Questions? Okay. Are there questions on that motion? Uh, hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 All right, I was waiting for Mickey there. Did we hear an aye from you, Matthew?
Yeah, you got an aye.
Okay, uh, they, uh, okay, those opposed. Uh, hearing none, uh, the recreational parcel agreement, uh, has been passed. And I do have a signed and initialed copy here. And I do have a signed and initialed copy here at City Hall, and I will sign it tonight and send it on its way so we can get this process going. Thank you, council, for that. Matthew, do you have a comment?
I was just wondering if there, we could briefly explain to the public what we just agreed to, since it's on the screen and it's fairly consequential.
Um, okay, 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 okay.
Can speak to it.
Go ahead.
I think I could quickly speak to it. Basically, that the land would need to be deeded over pretty quickly, and it gives a little outlined way of that happening. And it is certainly in the city's interest, the way that it's worded, so that we get the right property that we're looking for. We get an immediate contribution of the four hundred thousand. We get a, a, you know, we get the, the next one point six million by December thirty-first of this year. And we have a promissory note to that effect. And then the remaining two million of the four will be paid by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight. We have a promissory note. A couple, a couple of things could trigger an earlier payment. That would be the, the creation or approval of the final plat or its functional equivalent. And that would, that would trigger the, the, the next portion to be paid. Potential sale of the Suncadia property would need that amount to be paid as a precursor to the transfer of the Suncadia properties. And somebody can chime in if there's anything else that would trigger the good, the good nature of Suncadia. Just deciding that they want to pay early might be another third trigger.
Yes, okay, Matthew, does, does that cover it well enough, do you think, in your mind?
Yeah, I think so.
Yes, okay. And we will be talking with the newspaper to flush this out very thoroughly. So there'll be a good article in the paper about this stuff. And I, I thank everybody. This was, you know, it was, it was, it's a big deal. Okay, with that, then, I will move on to A, under new business and that resolution twenty twenty-one, and that's to increase the cemetery rates. Stephen Harper will take that.
Yeah, cemeteries, people are dying to get in. Anyways, every, every year we have a shortfall. The cemetery is a dead weight that the city is carrying out of the general fund. And in order to get that fund just kind of breaking even and supporting itself, we are raising the rates because we're still way low. We're still way lower than the other side of the mountains. We're also trying to come up with some creative ways of raising funds and developing the cemetery so as not to burden the general fund of the city. We definitely, we haven't necessarily seen a COVID-related rise in internments, but we will see a population-driven rise in internments as people want to live here. They'll inevitably expire within our city limits and within our external areas. And we need to have a framework that can properly intern them should they choose to try to be interned here and something that will not overburden the city. And so we're part of that. The first step is increasing the cemetery rates to be more reasonable. The emphasis has been increasing it for out-of-area internments, meaning people who just choose to be buried here but don't necessarily have a specific connection to this area, AKA haven't lived here for a while or they haven't been interned here, or they don't have family in the air, or, sorry, they don't have family in the area. And so that rate is, has more of a substantial increase, whereas the other ones are more just incremental increases to keep up with cost of business. And so I am seeking approval of resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero one.
Okay, there's.
I make a motion.
Hang on, it's moved and seconded. It's moved by Stephen Harper, seconded by Matthew Lund to approve resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero one. Now, questions?
I'll correct it.
Stephen, you're muted again.
Sorry, Matt. I moved it, and I think it's still waiting a second.
Oh, did Matthew, I thought Matthew seconded. Didn't I say that? No.
I made the motion.
Oh.
Yeah.
Matthew made the motion.
I'll second it.
And.
Ken seconded.
Ken seconded.
Doesn't matter who's on first.
Well, there's all kinds of little yellow squares going off on my screen. I don't know who's talking. All right, so Matthew made the motion, Ken seconded, and that's, will be official, as have Kathy. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero one has been passed. Okay, now we'll go to resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero two. And this is an update of the twenty-one fee schedule. Mike Engelhardt will explain the necessity of this.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, council members. It's actually the fee schedule that's going to the city of Kitata. When we did work for them, we didn't realize that our little excavator was not on the fee schedule, so that got added to the fee schedule. So we're just asking you to approve the fee schedule. It's exactly the same way it was with the addition of the excavator dirt, under the equipment line item.
Okay.
I make a motion.
I make them.
Resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero two.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's been a motion by Beth Williams to accept resolution twenty zero twenty-one zero zero two. And it's been seconded by Mickey Holtz. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor with aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none opposed, resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero two is passed. Okay, and we've already taken care of the recreational parcel agreement, see? And now we'll go down to the, the DNR. Who's that? Okay, so it's, I'm, I'm, what we have here is a, a resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero three and ILA with, with the DNR, the Forest Service Practice Permit. So what we've done with this, what we're doing with this ILA is we're withdrawing our objection that we had earlier for the Forest Service practice east into town. And we're entering into an agreement with the DNR that puts us in the CIPA lead whenever they're doing forest practices within the city limits. And so that, and so that's what we're asking the council to approve. Questions? Nope, don't hear any. So is there a motion? Okay, Stephen made the motion, and I'm, I'm here. Mickey, were we going to give you credit for the second?
Okay, go ahead.
All right.
Yes.
It's moved and seconded by Stephen Harper and seconded by Mickey to approve resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero zero three to enter into an ILA with DNR. Those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay, I think, Beth, I think that you're, you were.
I'm an a.
You're an A. Okay, not an A. Hearing none or opposed, that resolution twenty twenty-one zero zero three is approved. Now we'll go down to ordinance. Hey, what's that number? Sixteen oh two, building code update. And we'll have our city administrator, Robert Olman, walk us through that and explain the importance of it.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. Well, actually, you're not going to believe this. I, I just got an email at five thirty today. And the state Building Code Council have voted to extend this twenty eighteen effective date to July of this year. So I don't really want to adopt this code if the state's not adopting it. So I guess I'm going to ask to just withdraw this ordinance for, for now.
Okay, that's not a problem. So then, so, but you're still on the, on the deck here because it looks like you have ordinance sixteen oh three, amending the salary schedule, Rob.
Right, thank you again. And this is really a, quite a simple, a simple ordinance. It's only changing one number on this schedule. It's highlighted on your packet, and it, it was, it was kind of, because of some of the contract negotiations we're doing with the, with the police department and the union, just FYI, before it was six thousand five hundred and sixty-six. And now it's six thousand six hundred and thirty. And, and I would just recommend approving this ordinance.
Make the motion to approve sixteen oh three. Seconding the salary schedule.
Okay, it was moved by Mickey and Mickey Holtz, and it was seconded by John Galondo to approve ordinance sixteen oh three. Questions on the motion? All in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none opposed, ordinance number sixteen oh three is passed.
Okay.
Now, now, Mike is going to walk us through the final progress estimate for SO nine oh three in Stafford Street for the amount of twenty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-nine dollars ninety-nine cents. Mike, you're on.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. As any of you have driven down and by the Stafford intersection there on Second Street slash nine oh three, you noticed that they are completed. We had them, we had a little bit of money left over, so we had them come in and extend the curb on the northwest corner, just to make it a little more apparent and visible as you approach Second Street coming down the hill from Stafford there. But they did a great job. We had a couple of punch list items for them. They have since completed them. So we're asking the council to approve the mayor to sign off on the final progress payment.
Okay, Stephen.
Question. So where the sidewalk feathers into like the gravel, et cetera, that you're saying that that's all complete? And so the state that it's in is its final, what they're obligated to do?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions? How about a motion?
I'll make a motion. That we.
I'll second it.
Like John.
I don't know what we're talking about. Thank you for that, Mickey. I'll, I'll make the motion that we pay the final bill on this project.
Okay, that has been moved
I'll second it.
by John Galondo, seconded by Mickey Holtz to approve the final progress estimate, number two, for the Stafford Avenue project. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Hearing none, the Stafford Street sidewalk improvement, as final estimate, will be paid. Okay, let me look, where are we at? Okay, this one I have before you. We were asked by Department of Columbia, oh, the, the Ranger District is applying to, let me see, did I miss, oh, Wesley Craven.
Actually, yeah, you missed.
Yeah, okay, so, well, I don't know, this twenty twenty-one Wesley Craven contract for day, grave digging, digging services. And Stephen will explain the necessity of this.
Just, yeah, that we need to have one, and just updating it because it needs to be updated and making sure it has things like snow removal and expectations of standards of, et cetera. So, yeah, we feel like it's a good contract and it memorializes what we want to see going forward. I definitely want to take this opportunity to thank Wesley Craven. He has tirelessly served our community, and we look forward to him being able to do that in the future. And so I would support this contract to services and look for someone to, to motion it.
I make the vote, Mr. Mayor.
Ken.
I'm just wondering, is there any relation of this contract to a a problem on Broad, Broadway Street on the south side?
Well, this is, wow. It's a different, wow, I don't know.
Well, I can, I can say, I can say on behalf of the Cemetery Committee, this has, it never entered into our presence, and I think there are those on the committee who know nothing about that. I have no history with that. I, we simply have to have memorialized how we, how we work.
Okay, I realize that, but, but there is a substantial concern in our community on this situation on Broadway. I want to, I want to make that statement. And then, so let's.
I guess, okay, can I get some clarification? Can I, can I ask some clarification? Are you saying that there are those in the city?
No, no, I'm just going to make that statement, that's all.
Okay, and so Ken, just, you know, we are, we are, we follow, we work on that constantly, okay? We're well in that situation. This is outside of that situation. So we're looking for, did we have a motion to accept the contract for services with Wesley Craven?
We had a motion, we need a second now.
I'll second it.
Okay, so Mickey made the motion, and Stephen Harper seconded to enter into this contract for services with Wesley Craven for his grave digging, digging services. Question on the motion? Matthew.
I'm just confused about what just happened with what Ken was talking about. Is that relevant to this in some way? I have no context to it.
No, no, this is tangential, and I just wanted to make a statement. It's unfortunate that it's online, I suppose, but, so never mind, never mind.
Okay, all right. Okay, any other questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none, the contract with Wesley Craven, it will be approved. So the next one, now I'm on the thing here, and we, we were asked by the Forest Service to give a letter of support.
Mayor, you skipped one again.
Did I skip one again? Hang on a minute.
Yeah, we got Mike.
Oh, 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 yes, I skipped one again. I saw that, and I go, no, that's not on the agenda, is it? Mike, okay, amending the interlocal agreement with the city of Kitata. Boy, well, you know, it's a long night, the print is small.
I understand. All this really is, is our original agreement with the city of Kitata. All it included was our VAC truck. And since the last water main break, when they requested that we bring down more personnel and more equipment, we decided that it was going to be in the best interests of the city of Clealum that we update all of our interlocal agency agreements to include our entire staffing schedule. That way, there in the future, we don't have any potential mishaps when it comes to financing. So we're asking the mayor to, or the council to allow the mayor to sign the new interlocal agency agreement just approving that we have all of our rental rates or staff rates included in there.
I make the motion, we're starting the rental agreement, showing all the rental rates.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to amend the agreement between the city of Clealum and the city of Kitata for equipment services. Questions on the motion, Stephen?
Just, just a point of clarification, it's not a rental agreement, but it's a, it's a, it's a service agreement, like you stated.
Yes, service agreement.
Correct, sorry.
That's okay. Questions on the motion? With that clarification. Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agreement between city of Clealum and Kitata Amendment Number One for Services has been passed. All right, now I can talk about the Ranger District grant. So we were asked and all most of the other examples of support letters that we got. For the for services going to go to the RCO for. Money for their winter and summer grant programs. And so I had, Rob, we we wrote up this letter of support and I wanted to kind of. So the people at the RCO that read them will know how important the our relationship with the Forest Service and the outdoor. You know, or amenities that we have are very important to the city. So that I would ask the council to authorize me to sign this letter. In support.
I move that we authorize the mayor to sign the letter to the Washington State Recreation Conservation Office.
Moved a seconded authorized the mayor to sign the letter in support of the Forest Services Washington State Recreation Grant. Okay, questions on the motion? Matthew?
I think I'm in favor of this. I, I'm wondering, in the future, we have this with the checkerboard partnership letter that we authorized fairly recently. Can we get the supporting documents that we are?
Or support that we are, we're saying we're in support of in our packets in the future so that we know what we're actually saying yes to? Is it in there? Yeah, okay, yeah, for sure.
The, the actual grant proposal, sorry, I must have missed that.
Oh, the grant, I see, the grant proposal.
Yeah, because we're, we're saying we're in favor of grant proposals, and I'm sure we are, but I'd like to actually know what I'm saying I support.
Yes, okay.
I guess I already knew, so.
Well said, Matt.
Okay, any other questions on the, on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed? Okay, there's none opposed, the letter will be sent to the RCO for services. Yeah. Summer. Program application. So now this other one is coming here and we have. From the ours, from the Mitch, Mitch Long is here with us to maybe explain a little bit about why. Were, I'm asking you to approve this support for the grant. With the Kitata Conservation Trust. And I would open it up to Mitch to kind of explain what it is you're trying to do.
Thank you, Mayor McGowan and. Members of the Clealum City Council. So the Mid Columbia Fisheries Enhancement Group and Kitata Conservation Trust are looking to. To receive grant funding for the Drinking Water Providers Partnership Program. It's a combined program between federal and state partners. And so we've also reached out to the US Forest Service. As well, because we're looking at doing a detailed assessment in the Cabin Creek watershed, which is a part of your map watershed, although it may be a little bit far removed from the city of Clay element. And your thoughts, we're specifically looking at what are some geologic hazards and concerns and other things that have degraded habitat in Cabin Creek, particularly at the. Lower mile and a half of Cabin Creek to provide for better fish passage and also available habitat within the lower portions. Of the creek to support clean water and also improve the habitat conditions for ESA listed species. The Mid Columbia Steelhead and and Bull Trout that have the potential to inhabit that area. Right now, we're currently seeking funding just for some of the initial feasibility and assessment study that. Needs to happen before we can move forward with really kind of figuring out how do we unravel the problems that are happening there? And restore conditions for both fish and people. So that's, that's essentially what it is. We might be, if awarded, we'd be looking to the city of Clayellum to act as the fiscal fiscal sponsors. And so, you know, we would be including staff time for any administrative costs or anything, but you'd be the ones that would help us take that, those, those funds. That would be available from state and federal sources and make them available to our our project work here, so. And you guys would be that in that role because this is a part of your watershed, so. That's, that's it in a nutshell, and I'm happy to answer any other questions at at this time if I can.
Yeah.
Ken, go ahead.
This, this is Ken is. Which organization would be doing the study? Would it be Mid Columbia Fishing?
Yeah, we haven't really fleshed that out. We'll probably be doing it jointly. But at this time, we have a lot of large scale projects going on, so probably a lion's share of the work would be happening by Mid Columbia Fisheries. But we would be doing it in partnership. We have done a lot of work in the past in Cabin Creek and so.
And we, we being. When you say we.
KCT, Kitata Conservation Trust.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just wanted to get that and. Will. Okay, CT, okay, how about? How about the? We have the organization, there's the Kitata Conservation Trust and then there's the. The group that does a lot of fisheries studies out of Ellensburg, Anna Lael, that group, what what group is that?
That's the Kitata Conservation District, Kitata County Conservation District, so we often get confused with them.
They're, they're different, but they're, they're similar names, so.
Yeah, the Conservation District does a lot more work as it's tied to agricultural and irrigation. Needs as well as they do a bunch of forest health initiatives and things like that to help with firewizing.
Okay.
So we are.
So we're talking about. Yeah, the Conservation Trust that you're a part of and Mid Columbia Fisheries primarily. Okay, real good, thanks.
Stephen, go ahead.
So the wording says that we're supportive of the grant and its purpose and projected outcomes. We've been given this vague idea of restoring whatever, what is the outcomes? What are, what are the real world impacts? To the citizens that use the waterways etcetera? What are you projecting is going to be the outcome of these studies?
So these studies is basically going to be a geomorphic habitat and geologic assessment of. The particularly the lower portion of Cabin Creek approximately from River Mile Zero to River Mile Three. So River Mile Zero would be at the confluence of Cabin Creek and the Yakima River and then upstream to just above. A major mass wasting event that that's occurred, that's also known as the Falls Hill Slide.
Right, that's the confines of what you're doing, but what I'm saying is, what is the outcome? So you did this study and then what are you going to suggest like that we? Again, try to explain it to somebody who knows nothing about it? Are you going to ask us to, are you going to ask the state to fund dredging up the? You know, the stuff that fell into the water? I mean, what are, what are we going to ask? What, what are, what's going to happen?
So one of the, some of the big things that we need to determine is if that area has potential for restoration and what that potential is. And to do that in restoration means a lot of different things. But essentially, we're going to be seeing from the geologic perspective. Is that mass wasting event still a threat and are there things that could be done to address that threat for the the creek and its habitat values for fish? And the water quality values that and other ecosystem services that humans rely on. As well, the habitat, what kind of conditions exist currently and what could be done to improve that condition, particularly for passage in this area, so passage of adult. Migrating fish that may want to go up to spawning grounds up above this area as well as the juvenile help migration. Into the Yakima Mainstem and 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 beyond and from a geomorphic perspective, just understanding what are the impacts of. The, the both geologic and. The anthropogenic history are human impacts to that system and are there things as well that could be addressed to improve those things? So what we're really trying to do is answer the question is, are there things we can do there to fix it? Not necessarily what they are, but can it be fixed and what can we? And then how do we start getting to those answers? Because we have for restoration, because we've got a lot of questions on that, is it feasible? But and there is a lot of desire because of the habitat values upstream of this area for endangered species. For for spawning and rearing, but there's just a lot of things that we need to figure out and a lot of those impacts were caused by road building and. Logging in the past and past management practices there and how can we address those issues? So, you know. It's not like we're going to be able to figure out everything with this application, but it's going to start answering those questions and see if it is something that could rise to. A priority level for actually moving forward some conceptual design alternatives and and design and restoration in in the future.
Okay, who ultimately has jurisdiction over those plans? Like you draw them up or you give those suggestions? Who? Who, who adjudicates that in the end?
Well, we typically, the landowners we'll be working with, so specifically right now, that's the Central Cascade Forest lands. That are managed by TNC as well as DFW and the combination of. TCF lands or TNOA Community Forest Lands they have there and. And US Forest Service, but we always work, we don't work in a vacuum and we typically have a variety of technical experts that help us. To move forward and those represent all the regulatory agencies as well.
Ken, you had a question?
Yeah, how much, what's the amount of money in the grant that you're applying for?
Right now, we're, the grant ask is fifty thousand dollars.
And who's the grant from again, from?
I believe it's USDA and the Department of Health.
So I'm, I'll, I'll put a little.
Is that?
No, I was going to say, a part of the, for them to apply for this particular pot of money. It has to be, the money has to be held by a city that's in that watershed. And we have an MOU with the Conservation Trust, the Kitata Conservation Trust. So it would be easy for us to, we'll come back with, to amend the MOU with them. To include the handling of this money and we've run it past Robin. You know, whatever time she spends, you know, paying out or whatever she has to do, we'll be able to charge in this grant. I'm just adding that little tidbit there.
Okay, real good.
Matthew?
I have a, a process question about the letter. So this is already signed expressing support on behalf of the city. Was this something we'd already? Approved you to sign or is this not something that we needed to approve you to sign, Mr. Mayor? I'm just.
Okay, so here's what the situation was. This, this application went in and and this letter, I signed this letter with the caveat. That it had to be approved by the council, because you guys can, you know, negate it if you want. But it does say here that the grant, that it is, this letter was, was submitted. Before this meeting tonight with the understanding that it had to be approved, but they had to send it in and they stated. That this would be, had to be approved by the council. So because they had.
And by.
They had a deadline on submitting the application, I went ahead and signed it. I did this on Friday and we got it in for the agenda for today. Matthew, does that answer your question? That explain it at all to you?
It, it does. It says, accepting the grant funding contingent upon city council approval pending the meeting, but. It already sort of states our support of it. I'm not against it. I'm just trying to figure out if this is something that we we should have heard. Stephen, you, you seem.
Yeah. Stephen, I can tell you, our MO, I think our MOU makes it clear that the mayor can stand on our MOU and our history with KCT. That we're in substantial support of their activities in general. And I mean, we could get real specific, but the fact that we have that relationship in place, I don't think he's out of order to. To voice our support, but to say that we can't support this specific funding until there's a specific. Motion of the council. And so I would say that my judgment is it's totally in order, but I do get that process. You can't just write letters to anybody for any reason. On our behalf, and I don't think he's overstepped his bounds here.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't realize our MOU included this, this proposal or this, this project, so, okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions from the council about this? Even?
I just, just clarity, again, that it, that it's the general support of the KCT, it's not specific support of this particular. Application and so their activities in general, the fact that we support them in general, I believe would give a mayor license to say that we would in general. Support these type of activities because they're in keeping with the other things that we support under the MOU. So I think it's, again, it's a broad stretch, but I don't think it's a far reaching stretch that was taken.
Hey, any other questions from the council at all? Do I have a motion to authorize me to send this letter?
I would, I would move to that effect.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's moved by Stephen Harper, seconded by Ruston Weaver. To add the council's support to the Mid Columbia Fisheries proposal that. I have previously signed. Questions on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Hearing none, the authorization is approved and for some reason, something is ringing over here. Sorry, all right. Okay, thank you, Mitch, for sitting through this very long meeting. But I appreciate it and we'll continue to work on there.
Well, thank you very much, Mayor and Council. Have a great rest of your meeting and I look forward to updating you on Hanson Ponds, that work we're conducting there in the near future.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mitch.
Okay, now on. L, the downtown tax credit initiative program and. Rob has been working with Debbie Bogart to. Ask you to approve this. So Rob, why don't you go ahead? Explain the money thing.
Explain the money thing, yes, thank you. Basically, this is a tax credit that we give to the. Or that's available for the downtown association and Debbie is on the, on the line here if you want to have specific questions on the tax credit. But essentially, we've done it in the past and I'm asking the council to allow. Staff to to pledge up to fifteen thousand dollars for this first round and if there's a second round. To not have to come to council again, but go ahead and just approve us to do another, an additional fifteen thousand. Is that what I understand there, Debbie? Do you have anything to add?
Where what the amounts were that you were going to request, but it is what we talked about. So there's a first round. And possibly in April, there'll be a second round. There are thirty-six programs that have access to the the BNO Tax Credit Program. And during the first round, everybody has the same amount that they can acquire. So the city will receive a tax credit. They receive seventy-five percent of the. Fledge back as a tax credit in twenty twenty-two. So that's how it works and it's seventy-five percent of the tax credit, no matter what amount you make, so. Sometimes we need some pinch hitters if we've got some money that's been released by other programs, if they didn't, don't. If they're not able to get their ninety-one thousand dollars and there's some dollars out there running around, we're always looking for people who can go in and capture it for us. This is our main funding source. If they're not able to get their ninety one thousand dollars and there's some dollars out there running around, we're always looking for people to who can go in and capture it for us. This is our main funding source. Um we don't have a lot of fundraising at this point, particularly with the events being um as they are and we're just in the process of developing a. Community donor program, which is not really launched. We have some small grants, but. You know, this past year alone, we gave over half of that ninety thousand dollars away in small business grants. And support on the street. So this money is used, a hundred percent of what we get is used back in our businesses. So we appreciate you considering this.
Questions? You guys remember doing this before? No, no. You don't remember, John? Uh actually, we did it in January of last year. Um and this is how we, this is how we can support the Downtown Association, but Stephen, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, it's it's a no brainer. Um I believe we've done it in the past historically. Um we are up in the amount this year. But again, because of our discussions with businesses possibly not having uh that, you know, the amount because of incomes being less. I think it's in keeping um with us because again, this is a tax credit against our BNO. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, and so I would just uh I would recommend uh as it's given, uh I would move that we authorize the city to pledge. Fifteen thousand dollars in the first round of tax credits and another fifteen thousand in the next round, should it be needed. And uh again, so that and and take a second for discussion.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved to uh authorize the city to uh make the pledges of fifteen thousand. This round and a second additional fifteen if it comes available in the future. Questions on that motion?
So just discussion is, again, if everybody else jumps in and calls up early uh at, you know. Whatever, I forget the date that they do it at midnight. You got to call in or uh is that that's the still the process? You have to call in?
No, the so right now, we it opened today and I can tell you there's plenty of money left. Not everybody's gone in and pledged. It's April first that there could be additional mises available at twelve oh one AM. And that's when either Rob or Robin's going to have to be able to go in onto the system and clicks a click another um. Amount that you would like to to give to the Downtown Association, so.
So there's, so just to explain.
Yeah, we won't know until near the end of March whether there will be a second round. And then sometimes after that second round. Um an organi- uh organization, the Main Street Program, someone within their business group may decide they have to turn the credits back. And that's when we get unexpected emails saying there's twelve thousand dollars on the board and that's when I look for my pinch hitters to go in and get that. We can adhere, we can get claim up to a hundred and thirty three thousand dollars a year. We have not been able to acquire that for about three years because. The Main Street Programs are growing and the amount of money being divided amongst us, that two point five million that the state sets aside is is reducing. As we add new Main Street Programs into the state. So this is critically important for us to get what we can. Did I help Stephen?
I believe so.
Okay, so.
Can you use some of the forty three thousand in it?
Excuse me?
Well, well, the hotel motel can they contribute to it?
We do, we do go after lodging tax also.
We we have used hotel motel to support the Main Street Program aside from this type of 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 donation. It's it's a whole different process.
This is a win win. This is a win win for you. You get a tax credit back, a significant one as well as uh supporting us.
So let me ask this. So Stephen, did you, was this, did you make a motion and John gone? I've forgotten. It's so it's been moved.
Correct.
Right? Boy, oh boy, oh boy. Alright, any other questions on the motion? If not, all those in favor with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Did Beth, did we hear from you, Beth?
Sorry, my finger's kind of slow. Yes, aye.
So I'm getting better. Okay, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, there's one, any other opposed? Um there's uh six, four and one opposed. Uh the uh the downtown tax credit incentive program has been approved. Okay, we're down to committee reports and uh and Beth Williams is going to give us a little report on the Legislative Procedure Committee. So uh how what how what kind of progress you making?
I actually asked Matthew to do this for me tonight.
Oh, Matthew, um did you hear that?
I did, yeah. Um not not a huge uh report tonight, but we um. We uh are meeting tomorrow actually um to start working through our, I guess, draft of um. Our initial draft, figuring out what topics we're going to cover uh in the manual, it's not the right word, but for lack of a better term. Um and so. Uh we'll be working on that list and then starting to sort of methodically work through that uh that uh list of work. Um but we're we're prioritizing, we we think we'll bring it to council in in bunches um uh starting with looking at our um. Uh whether we use Robert's Rules of Order or some other kind of um. Legislative procedure manual to to conduct our business and then we'll be, we'll be working through the other items uh. As quickly as we can. So uh you know, we're 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 on our way and uh I I just want to thank Gary Burnt very much. He has been um a just a tremendous. Uh asset to the committee as chair. He's been really um keeping us on task and 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 sending us stuff and I just like, I can't say enough about how great he's been, so.
Okay, thank you for that. So now, back to Cemetery Committee Presentation, Stephen.
Uh so yeah, I I I believe everything that we need to bring before the council has been covered. Uh we'll continue to do some more work and you'll see more actionable items, uh but I appreciate um your uh votes on what we've been able to bring before you. And then I would, without any other business, I would motion to adjourn.
Oh, I don't know. Are you guys sure?
I can't. Hey, is that utility meeting this Wednesday?
Yes, sir.
Ken?
Uh, I was, I was just checking here and.
Yes.
It is, it's at two thirty.
Two thirty.
There it is, yeah, yeah, okay, at City Hall, yeah, Rob.
Okay.
Yeah, City Hall or Zoom.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Two thirty.
Yeah.
Alright, thanks everyone. Uh good job. We did a lot of business tonight. Let's.
Thank you, Jay.
That's all right. We weren't wasting our time. Alright, thanks a lot.